And we got everybody, Leila?
Yes, we do.
Great. So then I'd like to formally and officially call this meeting to order. This is a workshop of the City Council, City of Manzanita. Today's Wednesday, May 14th. It's 2:00 PM. And our focus this afternoon is both singular and broad. This is a portion of our work on the comprehensive plan. We are focused on housing today. And my phone is just ringing, so let me get rid of that. Sorry about that.
Good reminder.
You're welcome. I'm always there to help other people look good. So there you go. Yeah, and today our focus is on housing. We've got with us Marcy, is it Mickalini?
Thanks for asking. It's McInnelli.
McInnelli, boy. Okay, once again, here to make everybody else look good. You'll know what to say now for last names. Who has been working diligently and putting in some hours, as has Scott, with our Planning Commission. So I'm really stating this for the benefit of anybody listening later to just say this is a part of a sequence of meetings that have been focused on our housing ordinances in the city, focused in two parts. One, on the need for us to be in compliance with state law of Oregon, which we are not currently and need to get that corrected. And also in the spirit of the work on our comprehensive plan, which was looking at, is looking at housing as one of the many elements of that plan and how we need to plan for the future. There's going to be a lot of use of the word "plan" today. I think I'm just getting us kicked off with that. So I'm expecting a very focused meeting. I gave Leila a heads up yesterday. It may just be me, but I plan to go slow. And so I think slow and diligent is the way to make sure we do understand the content. The Planning Commission has spent hours and hours on this. This is normally their bailiwick. It's not the bailiwick normally of the City Council to spend time on housing ordinances. So we're going to learn a lot today. I know many of you have been preparing by reading the materials and also participating in meetings. But I really encourage us all to take an opportunity today to look at this with fresh eyes and think of ourselves as people in the community who are relatively new to the topic. And I want to make sure we ask a ton of questions. I sometimes say it's not true, there is such a thing as a dumb question, but in this case, I waive that opinion. I think anything is fair to ask. And if we have to go back to the beginning in some ways, or some things may be repetitive for other people, that's perfectly fine. This is important work. It deserves our scrutiny and our attention. So with that said, I'd like to welcome everybody here and our stalwart members of the community who have joined us for this session today. Appreciate that. And thanks also to anybody who may be looking later at a recording of this. So Leila, I'd like to ask, do you have anything you want to say to get us started with Marcy today in addition to what I have said? Or correct me if I've missed anything?
There's nothing to correct. I think you've done a great job sort of outlining what we're doing here today. Marcy's going to focus more broadly, but all of you, I know, have received all of the detailed ordinance amendments. And so I think our goal here is to give sort of a high-level overview, sort of starting at the beginning, kind of where we are now, and then open it up for conversation and discussion with the council on anything, as deep as you want to go, on anything that you see fit. So I think with that, I will hand the mic over to Marcy once Brad asks his question.
So you want us to listen to the high-level overview and then get into questions? Or should we do questions as we go along?
Marcy, do you have a preference?
No, I don't have a preference. You can ask questions as we go. I might tell you, though, that I'm about to explain something that you're asking a question about.
Floor is yours. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have a presentation, because a lot of this material is more easily discussed in visual form. So I'm going to share my screen. And please let me know if you can see this.
We can see it.
Okay, great. My agenda for us is four parts. The biggest part is Part Three, lots of detail in there. But I want to talk to you about how we've worked really hard to incorporate community preferences into this work, even though it is something that we're doing for the state. This is by no means a... It's probably 30% helping you meet the state. And then the rest of it, I think, is entirely community preferences and choice. I mean, they give you an overview of the amendments that we are engaged in adopting in July, and summarize the state requirements versus your local preferences and how we have customized our amendments accordingly. And then lastly, just we'll talk about the schedule for adoption. So how we've incorporated the community preferences, you know, I'll show you more of the substance that has resulted. But we've done it through a lot of meetings. I've been part of many of the Comprehensive Plan Committee meetings. And then we conducted a housing preferences survey, open to the community, that told us a lot about how much people want more diverse housing and more choices in housing. We conducted some interviews. We had a stakeholder survey with selected stakeholders that told us a little bit about their views. We, as some of you were there at the community open house, we had a evening spent working through maps and housing icons that were placed on the map. That was back in October, I believe. And then since then, I've had six work sessions with the Planning Commission. And the result is a very high degree of customization to meet your local situation and your preferences. So just in the most simple form, what we're engaged in is... Mostly, our actions have to do with the zoning ordinance 95-4. And this list is definitely a simplification of what's going on, but it helps you kind of get into the situation. We have a lot of housing types to meet state rules that we need to incorporate. And so one of the simplest things we're doing is adding those definitions to your zoning code. We've also updated the land use listing and managed to consolidate your residential zones from five to three. It's a little more... They're far more complicated than they need to be. And yeah, and let me just get through this list. We have a whole new section that we're introducing, which is clear and objective design standards that will apply to all new housing. These are administratively approved. They're not a design review process. And then we're reducing parking requirements. And this is one of the things that's actually required. But we're allowing some more innovative approaches to parking, such as shared parking, like you have at classic cottages, or allowing on-street parking to count. And then Brad, can you ask your question? I think you're muted.
There we are. When I looked at the more extensive document that was in the council packet, I did see the maps depicting zones MH1, 2, and 3. Are the current C1 zone and the LC zone remaining the same? So overall, we will have five zones, three of them residential and the two commercial ones.
Yes, correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Any other questions before I go on? So another piece of work that we're engaged in is not required by the state, but it's something that enables us to get more innovative and more diverse housing types, is rewriting your land division ordinance. It's your subdivision ordinance. It will be renamed Land Division. That's a more current title in the planning world. But when some of our goals are to allow smaller lots than you permit today, and also simplify the land division and the planned unit development provisions, which are very complicated. All right. So one of the first things... Yeah, Thomas?
I can go by Tom. So it would be helpful for me if, as we go through this, you tell, differentiate between the have-to-dos as opposed to the would-like-to-dos? Just so that I can get that clear in my head.
Yeah, sure. Thanks for that. That's actually how we've framed a lot of the process going forward. So this slide leads right into that, Tom. It's the have-to-do housing types, the ones that are required, that you have to allow to meet state rules, are accessory dwelling units, duplexes, townhouses or row houses, which are basically dwellings that are attached on their sides and sit on their own lots. And then plexes, which beyond duplexes... So a triplex is simply three units on a lot. Quadplexes is four units on a lot. And cottage clusters, which are very small dwellings arranged around a common courtyard or common green. These are the have-to-dos. As we went through community discussions, especially coming out of the... Well, the Planning Commission really wanted to look at additional housing types. And then we verified those want-to-do types at the community meeting in October. So as a result, we have a longer list, and that consists of narrow-lot homes. These would be like townhouses, but detached. And courtyard apartments, which would be like a cottage cluster that is very small units around a common area, but attached. Also, people are interested in allowing small apartment buildings, sometimes called woody walk-ups. And people are interested in allowing residential uses in your commercial zones, so allowing mixed-use buildings where you'd have residential on top of retail. People are also interested in having cottages that just on their own lots, not necessarily part of a cluster. And the last thing I've already mentioned. Any questions about that list right now?
Yes.
Mayor Stock, yes.
Could you just clarify what a cottage standalone would be as opposed to a narrow-lot home, a regular home? And I get what it is when it's in a cluster, but tell me what that looks like as a standalone and how that's different?
Sure. So the cottage cluster, as it's been defined by the state, it's actually one of their most stringent recipes. There are lots of ingredients that go into this housing type. It's intended to be affordable. The limit is on, there's a limit on the footprint of the unit and also the height of it. So they're generally about 900 to 1,200 square feet. There's actually a limit, but there's no density maximum. So it's a very form, it's dictated entirely by the size of the unit, the spacing of the units in relationship to each other, the amount of common area that each unit has to kind of donate to common use. And it's highly prescriptive. But people were... It's generally a cluster of units. Like, if you're familiar with classic cottages...
Yes.
Raise your hand if you're familiar with that. It's like that. But people were interested, but those are all on one lot. People were interested in having a small cottage just on its own lot, not as part of a cluster. That requires us to do some things with your land division ordinance that will make that possible. Otherwise, it wouldn't be possible.
Well, let me know if I'm getting too deep in the weeds here, but how would that be different than someone's decision to just build a small house on a lot? Why is it necessary? Is it its own category?
It's... Yeah, you're asking really good questions. A narrow-lot house and a standalone cottage could very well look the same, be the same. In the end, but they're not things that you have to do right now. In order to make either of those, the narrow-lot house or the standalone cottage possible, we have to make it possible for you to make a very small lot. And 1,250 square feet is the small lot that we're going to change your land division code to allow, which is...
Pending, pending process and approval and hearings, et cetera, or is that...
Exactly. It's a proposal.
Just be careful of our language on that, because some of this, as Tom pointed out, some of it's required, some of it's not. And so anything that is subject to citizen input, to the Planning Commission and to us, I'd just like to be very clear about that. So the smaller lots would be something that's not required. But in order to enable these two kinds of housing, we would do that as a part of it? Is that the gist of it?
Yes. And to get into the weeds a little bit, because it's necessary, you do need to, right now, your minimum lot size in your residential zones is 5,000 square feet. But your city is unusual in that it allows duplexes already, but it requires you to have a 2,500-square-foot lot. It allows you to have 2,500 square feet for each unit. So say you have a 5,000-square-foot lot, then you could do two units on it today. It would be on one lot, and that would be a duplex. And in fact, the state requires cities, they don't already have this type of zoning in place like you already do, but they require cities to allow a 2,500-square-foot lot for a townhouse. So in a way, you already have some of this in your zoning code. And 1,250 square feet would be a half of that. But that's going, that's the piece that goes above and beyond what the state requires. The state only requires you to have, to allow a 2,500-square-foot lot. Tom?
Thank you. So I noticed that you have cottage clusters in both the have-to-dos and the want-to-dos list. Is there a difference? Or, and then can you tell me how the list of the want-to-dos was developed? Was that through the community meeting, through the survey results, and the work with the Planning Commission? Is that how you synthesized your want-to-do list?
Yeah, that's a good question. So let me take the first one, which is what's the difference between the first listing of cottage clusters and the second? The first listing is really per the recipe that the state requires. 900 square feet, shared parking, no garage, a limit in height, a certain amount of square footage must be donated to the common green. It's very stringent. And people have been interested in cottage clusters that are a little more lenient on certain issues. So we would be, we have written in the rules that allow that. But it has to be separate from, in order to check the box with the state that we're allowing their state-required cottage clusters, we have to do it one way, and then we can do it kind of the Manzanita way, in addition to. So the cottage, classic cottages would not actually, you know, meet the state requirements. But you want to, we want to allow things like that. Okay, so then your other question was, how did we get to the want-to-do list? There's, we spent quite a bit of time with the Planning Commission in, I think it was a briefing at the end of the summer, going through each of these housing types. And if you haven't actually seen this book, I recommend you get one from Leila. I helped write the book, and it kind of catalogs each of these housing types. And people came, planning commissioners came to the meeting with ideas already about wanting to include certain housing types, like the courtyard apartments, for example. So they, I was told, you know, we would like you to explore these as well. And so added them to the list. And then we took this kind of expanded list to the October workshop. And I don't know who of you were there, but I think there were about 12 tables. It was a really well-attended evening event. And people had maps of the city, and then they had icons of the have-to-dos... Sorry, they had icons of the want-to-dos. There wasn't a choice about the have-to-do. So we didn't ask people to start placing their icons on the map, because we basically have to allow those. But we wanted to know, were people in general, beyond the Planning Commission, how did people feel about these additional housing types? And where would they like them to be? Did they have any idea of limitations on them? Did they prefer them in one place and prefer they not go in another place? And that was the result of the community workshop. Does that answer your question, Tom? Any more questions about this slide? I have flagged this word, or the three-story apartment buildings. That is something that we were, you know, it was, there was a desire to include that, to look into where those types of dwellings could be. And I'm asterisking it because we have settled on, I think, a form-based approach that will allow those, but in very limited locations based on the form. And I'm going to go into more detail on that in a minute. But I do think that it may be one of the more controversial additional housing types. So you're probably wondering, what does she mean when she says "form-based approach"? It's a zoning term, you know, it's a... It's where a lot of, we are trying to include more old-fashioned types of considerations that used to go into village or town, design, like shape of a dwelling, relationship to the street, more of an architectural form, considerations that go above and beyond just what's the land use. And your code is not unusual compared to other codes in that it concentrates mostly on the land use. If you've ever looked through your ordinance, you'll see that the land use list goes on and on and on. And the shape and size of the housing or the building, if it's downtown, a mixed-use building, say, there's not a lot of consideration that goes into the form. A form-based approach is one that says that we're almost more concerned about the shape and size of buildings and really less concerned about what's inside. And the whole middle housing goal is to allow more houses that look like houses, but might have more than one dwelling inside, but they don't look that much different. But you are providing a wider range of housing options for people. So we have added in a lot more regulation-shaping development that you don't currently have. That's one of the major efforts of our local customization. We've introduced a concept called floor-area ratio. So sorry, that's a misspelling there, or FAR. It is a formula that says you can build, it tells you how much your total capacity for development is on the site. And you don't have anything like that in your residential area today. And my understanding is that you didn't have anything like that at all in the city, but recently you adopted floor-area ratio for your commercial area. It's really much more common to use this now, and as houses have gotten bigger, people are more interested in controlling the size of the dwelling. Right now, the thing that controls the size of a dwelling on residential lot is going to be your setbacks and your height. And you have a daylight plane, which limits the looming effect on the side yard. But otherwise, it's pretty much, you can build all the way to the edge of your rear yard setback, all the way to the edge of your front yard setback, and all the way to the height. You could have a big box. And this has not really been an issue in the past. But when we get into middle housing, and also I think coastal communities are facing an issue with very, very large houses. So imposing a floor-area ratio makes some sense, especially if you have that at work in your commercial area. Certainly makes sense to use that same tool in your residential areas. Any questions so far?
I have one on this, so maybe two. Are there any communities around us that we'd be familiar with who do have in their residential areas a FAR, floor-area ratio, in place? So that we could say, oh, that's why such and such a town looks the way it does, or it doesn't?
The answer is no, because it has not been an issue. People generally built a house-shaped building on a residential lot, and they never come anywhere close to utilizing the whole building envelope. It has become more common since middle housing. The place that I know that's had it instituted the longest is Portland for residential areas. But I am also aware that most Tillamook cities that are, and unincorporated areas that are coming into compliance with the state rules are imposing a floor-area ratio, also for the same reasons that I'm describing.
And could you give a hint then to, not all the detail? I guess I'm wondering about the... I understand the logic of it, how the, how the actual, how you get to your actual numbers without being too extreme. So what you're trying to prevent with this is, in some people's opinion, and I'd say it's an opinion, an extreme use of the lot size, looking only at setbacks, which is what we have in place today. How does the, how do you go about determining what a smaller footprint should look like and know that you've not gone too far with that in terms of restrictions? How does that work?
Well, actually, so if I could jump down to a graphic representation of some of these testing...
And I can wait, Marcy, I can wait on that, too, if the flow works better for later. That's fine.
I think it's good to talk about this now. Let's mix in some pictures with the words, all the words that I'm saying. It makes it easier to explain. Well, one thing we did was, so we, this is some testing that we did based on your lot sizes and some examples. We wanted to know, this diagram here on the lower left is about, with all of the development regulations that you currently have in place, as I mentioned, the daylight plane, this is a simplification of that. But this rep, this orange square underneath this shape represents the buildable lot area based on your setbacks. And this is the height on the side. This is the ultimate height. And when we calculate how much floor area you could get in a house, how much habitable space, we find that your FAR, like in the largest zone, in the 5,000-square-foot zone of R3 on a 5,000-square-foot lot, you could get a .88 to 1. I mean, that's what, that's how much, that means that you can get .88 of the total floor, total lot area. That's .88 of the lot to 1, the lot represents 1. That's what the floor-area ratio refers to. And this is a pretty high number. Most commercial areas don't have that high of a floor-area ratio. They don't allow that much development. Your floor-area ratio that was imposed on your downtown recently is .65 to 1. So we took the .65 to 1 as a reference, as you could build something that could be as big as a commercial building on your lot. But then we imposed some form standards, such as increasing the daylight plane. And in this diagram here, if you can see this on the rear of their lot, there's a more severe daylight plane that shapes the house and makes it more... The way that you would fit into that is to have a sloped roof or something that's more central on the lot. And that was recently discussed with the Planning Commission. And I believe they're, they want to go forward with this concept. But it allows a taller house on the front of the lot. So this is how... So this is how the floor area ratio concept has been established and then further modified.
Just out of curiosity, when did the change happen to the commercial buildings? I have to confess, I wasn't aware of that. Not that I should have been, but I didn't know that had happened. Is that a relatively recent thing, Leila?
I want to say it was 2014, but I'll check.
Oh, 2014, okay, well, that's not recent. I mean, I know for some people that's recent, but that's ways ago, okay. Yeah, I just, you know, for, this is not news to you, Marcy. You've coached and led people through this process many a time. I think for a regular person, and I'll call myself a regular person, this is one of these areas that's a lot to get in my head and really picture and try to imagine how that does change things here. And also how much of a difference it is from what people, you know, can see happening now. I mean, it's one thing, and I understand we've received feedback from people who do not like the size and shape of some very big, within their mind are big homes, appropriate to the person building it, but to somebody else, a big home that takes up most of the lot, which is perfectly fine under the way that we've had our laws set up up until now. So it's just, it's, I know I'm not going to absorb it here, but as we do the work going forward, this is an area that it would just be helpful to keep trying to visualize what this actually means to the town. It's one thing to look at a diagram like this. And even that, for a non-architect, and I know we have a lot of good architects on our planning commission, but for a non-architect, it takes a little bit to get into these diagrams and then try to think, as people do, well, how does that change my street? How does that change my friend's street? Is it going to be more of a change in one part of a town or another part of town? And that's the, that's the loop that my brain's working on right now. And I have to say, I'm not there yet. So this is helpful, but I just would comment and say, there's still a lot of question in my mind about how this would, how this would actually play out. And I may be by myself on that, rest of council may be way ahead of me on this one, but that's where I'm at right now.
I would like to let Tom and one other person, I can't see who that is. And maybe, is this a good time for Scott? You had something to say, did you want to chip in?
No, thank you though, I had a comment, but I think it was resolved then.
Okay. Tom?
Thanks, Marcy. So I'm looking at your drawings here over on the right side and I see everything with a gable-style roof. And then the Polaris gallery has a flat roof, I believe. And I know that shed-style roofs seem to be pretty popular these days. When you're talking about building height, how does the gable-style roof work into, is it the top of the gable then? Do you get more space if you have a flat roof?
That, that's actually a change in your definition that we're going to be writing. You don't currently have a way of measuring, say, on a sloped lot, you don't, you don't tell the applicant where they have to measure height from. And on a sloped roof, whether it's pitched or it's a shed, you also don't tell the applicant where you count the maximum height. So there's a lot of ambiguity in your code right now. And we're going to clarify that. We're going to do what other zoning codes typically do, which is they, they measure the median. If the lot is sloped, they measure the median point. And for a sloped roof, they measure the median point of the slope. So that would allow you to have a slightly taller roof if you had a, say, peaked roof like we're showing right here. So Linda, did that answer your question, Tom? Linda?
This is probably one of those dumbass questions. But how does this fit into middle housing? I mean, it seems to me these, what you're doing is allowing larger housings on the lot. So how does that, how is that supporting middle housing?
Good question. We aren't allowing larger houses than you could already build. In fact, this, this model here is actually paring it down a little bit. Right now, you, you would allow, so if I could try to blow this up a little bit, make it a little easier to explain, because this, we, we call, in my firm, we call this shape the jello mold. It's like the, the shape that if you poured some jello into mold, it would come out and it would look like this. It's defined by the side yard setback, the front yard setback, the maximum height. And today, this line, which is this boxy shape that goes around, that's actually allowed all the way around your lot. You could build a house this big, this tall on the back of the lot, under today's standards. So that, how it fits into middle housing is that we probably are going to see more pressure in that jello mold and more of a desire to fill the jello mold completely up. So, and that, that's a good thing because we may actually be getting additional units, smaller units, maybe a plex, a fourplex on a site. So four dwelling units in the shape of a house, that's going to provide more, more housing options. At the same time that we're, that we're trying to increase the number of dwelling units on a lot and the variety and size, we still want to be sensitive to what shape do people want? And so far, people are, you know, the direction from the planning commission and our recommendation is that you may want to pare that building envelope or that jello mold down when it comes to the back of the lot. Most people care about their backyards and they might not want a house this big in the backyard. But if you can look at this, this dwelling here, this is actually designed to be a duplex on a 5,000 square foot lot. So it could be a single dwelling and this could be another dwelling in the back, all fitting inside a highly modified jello mold. That's, that's a little bit more petite than what you allow today. Does that answer your question, Linda?
Yeah, it does. So we're really dealing with the jello mold size as opposed to right now, what goes into that jello mold size.
Exactly, exactly. And that's a very form-based attitude. It's like, we want to establish a jello mold that's acceptable. And then inside of that, people could do a range of housing types.
Ah, that makes sense. Thank you, Marcy, that was very helpful.
Sure, great, I'm glad. Leila?
I just wanted to clarify that, I'm going to answer the mayor's question. So the .65 FAR in the commercial zone is actually 2011.
Wow, when one of the planning commissioners said that she was on the planning commission when, and she helped bring that into existence, I didn't realize that. That means she's served on the planning commission for a very long time.
Yes, and it also means I didn't miss something that happened recently and forgot. So I feel gratified by that answer too, thank you.
Brad?
I don't think you got to the point back up above, but we were talking about floor area ratio and after that was limiting square feet.
Yeah.
And in the documentation I looked at, it looked like a dwelling unit was going to be limited to 2,500 square feet. How do those two correlate with each other? Is there association between the floor area ratio and the dwelling unit size?
Yes, I love these questions, thank you. So the, actually, the maximum lot dwelling unit size was a very healthy discussion at the planning commission and we are now settled on, as a proposal, a 3,000 square foot dwelling. And the way it works is that your first dwelling, if you're just coming in, you've got your jello mold, you build one dwelling, you can make it 3,000 square feet. If you come in and with a proposal to add a dwelling, you get additional floor area ratio up to the maximum floor area ratio that you have for that lot. And if you have a large lot, that's a lot of floor area ratio because it, it's proportional to the lot size. So it's a way of rewarding additional units?
So if I had a 50 by 100 lot versus 100 by 100 lot, the maximum square footage for any one dwelling would be 3,000 square feet.
For one dwelling. And then if you add a dwelling, it goes up. Your floor area ratio or allowance for that lot is, it was on the previous diagram. It can be as high as, for a 5,000 square foot lot in some of your zones right now, it's a four, it's about a 4,500 square foot allowance that you get through your floor area ratio.
So technically, you could build a 3,000 square foot unit and then an additional 4,500 square foot unit.
I think it's additional like 1,500. And I don't, don't, don't go beyond the math there. Because your total FAR stays the same. You take little bits out of the, you add more jello if you, to the mold for each, you get a little bit more for each dwelling unit.
So technically, if someone was fishing for a big house and they had a 100 by 100 or 150 by 100, they could build a 3,000 square unit and then additional ones not attached to it.
Could be attached as well, though if it's a, if it's a quadplex, the current proposal is it could be attached, detached, stacked, a combination. It's very free at this point. We don't require them to be detached, we don't require them to be attached, it's a choice.
But if somebody is wanting to build a rather large unit, they can do so by deeming them separate dwelling units, even though they're attached and still have a very large home. So what I'm getting at is I don't understand what the, what the square footage for the floor area ratio is restricting these really large houses that people don't particularly like.
Today, you could build a 4,500 square foot house with one kitchen. It's really cooking facilities and sanitary facilities that make it a dwelling. And what we're saying is that one dwelling can be maximum 3,000 square feet. Then if you are building a multi-generational compound for your family, you could certainly add on another unit, it could be attached. It would have to be considered a dwelling and would have to have its own kitchen and sanitary facilities.
So we could conceivably do so by putting a kitchen and a half bath in that additional unit.
Yeah, you could. But you might also have an additional unit, you know, that, that would help us meet our middle housing goals.
Thank you.
Tom?
Thank you. So I'm getting, my head's starting to swim with this stuff a little bit because I listened to the planning commission's meeting this morning. And in that, there was some definitional stuff that was discussed, getting away from the use of the term of a family residence. But in this conversation, I'm starting to hear the terms dwelling, dwelling unit and unit. And are they being used interchangeably or is there a difference?
We, I'm using them as the same thing. And we will be updating your definition so that it very clearly states what is a dwelling. And we're probably going to not use the word unit any longer. It'll just be dwelling. What, what is required to, how is a dwelling defined, will be defined in your ordinance?
So is, is the, okay, so the dwelling, it might, a building is a building as opposed to a dwelling. A dwelling would be what? A person or a family or a shared residence would be the single thing?
It would be a, it would be, a dwelling would be defined as having a certain amount of cooking facilities and a certain amount of sanitary facilities. That would be a dwelling.
Within, in the commission discussion, it was about potentials for shared cooking facilities, shared personal grooming areas, which would then be separate sleeping areas. But that's still a single dwelling?
Right.
And what term would we use to refer to the living spaces, the individual living spaces?
There, that's not, you're not required to provide a certain amount of living space to qualify as a dwelling.
Okay, but.
We don't put that, we don't put that in your ordinance.
But in order to accomplish this middle housing goal, you know, in many instances, we're talking about having multiple separate places where people will reside. So how, is there, is there a term that's used for those spaces where a person, a family, a couple would reside that was not dwelling? How do we, how do we talk about that?
Well, what, that's all intended to be included in the definition of a dwelling. A dwelling is a, a dwelling is a building for a household, can be family, non-family. That has a certain requirement for kitchen facilities and bathroom facilities. Beyond that, we aren't defining what is a dwelling. We're not saying it needs to be a minimum number of square feet, although there is building code requirements for that. But that's where the building code comes into play. Tom, you look a little confused. Is there something else that I can explain here?
No, I don't want to suck up all the time. So my learning curve is, if Catherine's telling me she's got a steep learning curve, I'm, I'm really scaling the walls. And so I'll, I'll find other resources to try to get some of these things explained to me because I don't want to suck up everybody else's time.
But this is, this is actually good. So this is kind of like one of those page markers where we just say, that came up, it's still not super clear, let's come back to that in further conversation. Because it is a lot to take in and a lot to learn and all the, if all these things could just exist by themselves, not in connection with each other, we'd have an easier time of it. But in the end, every single thing we're talking about connects and then relates. So it's going to take some time and some repetition, I think. So I'd say, I think it's good to pause on this right now. I'm still basking in the other, simmering whatever in the earlier conversation. And I think we're going to have that. But I think it's better to call it out with the group here so we know kind of where some of the areas are that we're working on, you know, internally to make sure we understand before we get to the point where we're listening to the community and seeing how it fits our understanding and then ultimately making some decisions about this. So I think that's good, Tom.
Well, I'll, I'll just jump in here because I think mine's similar to Tom's point was, what if we have someone on a lot and they say, I want to put in a 250 square foot building? Could be a garage, could be an art studio, could be a bedroom, but not a dwelling unit because. but not a dwelling unit because it wouldn't necessarily have sanitary and cooking facilities in it. Where does that fall into it? And then if somebody already has one of these buildings on their property, I'm assuming now, if this all changes and goes through, they would be allowed to add cooking facilities to that unit for which they cannot today.
They could add to the, they could add cooking and sanitary facilities to an accessory building, say, a little studio that somebody had built. But they would also have to meet building code requirements for egress and fire separation. If it's close to other buildings, they would have to meet, it would have to be connected to the utilities system of the city. So there are other things that go above and beyond the zoning code that determine its nature as a dwelling.
And non-dwelling units or separate buildings would fall under the existing building codes if someone wanted to add a studio or a garage, so to speak.
Right.
Clear. Thank you.
Okay, so I'm going to move on and talk about some of the, oh, Brad, go ahead.
Oh, sorry. I was trying to lower my hand and it was already lowered. Sorry.
No problem. All right. So we've talked about introducing the floor area ratio and the maximum dwelling unit size. Another nuance for you locally, a preference that came out of these discussions with planning commission is that there's no maximum lot size. So somebody could have, could aggregate lots and have quite a large lot, which is just something to keep in mind when we're talking about the Jell-O mold and the floor area ratio. But with a lot of these form-based approaches, those things all work together to sort of control ultimately the form. But this is, this is something that's part of the proposal. I just wanted to make that clear. And then the intention is that all of the housing types, both the have-to-do and want-to-do housing types are allowed in every zone. But, and I'm going to get into a little, a little bit of information about how we've differentiated between the three zones. There are smaller forms in what we're calling the middle housing one, MH1, and larger forms in MH2 and 3. A smaller form might be, example would be town, townhouses, you know, which tend to, sometimes you see townhouses in an urban area and there might be four together and it's a kind of a larger building. There might even be more than four in some urban areas. You have a lot of them attached. And so an example of a smaller townhouse shape would be limiting the number that can be attached. In MH1, we're proposing that only two would be permitted. In MH2 and 3, more, up to four, would be allowed to be attached. So I want to kind of go back a step and just talk about what the have-to-do is all about, like, and why the state, what's involved in the state legislation. When the city, when the state of Oregon passed House Bill 2001, they imposed a model code for cities that wouldn't, that didn't want to go through the effort that you're going through to customize the code for their own situation. They have, they said, okay, great, you can take this model code that we have written and apply it. And I'm just showing you some of the text from that, some of the illustrations from it. And this is what we would, you would adopt if we don't adopt this code that's under proposal instead. It would automatically go into effect. And I don't think it's very sensitive to most cities' context. So we have taken a lot of effort to try to customize. And one of the ways, as I've been talking about, is that we're adopting a form-based approach. And I want to talk a little bit specifically about how we, Urbswerk studied. I personally walked your streets and took drone footage and took lots and lots of photos and have studied Manzanita quite extensively in order to come up with these different context zones that then we're using to inform the three different residential zones. And the way I explained this to the planning commission was that I see there being three very distinctively different context zones in the, in Manzanita. One is the older area to the north of Lenida Avenue. It's really more hilly than the, the south of Lenida Avenue area. And so there's a lot of, much more vegetation in front of buildings. But you, and lots of the houses are set up almost a story above. It has a very distinctive character, the area north of Lenida. The area south of Lenida, that is the Nakarni area and the area to the west of the golf course has a similar character, but it also has these really flat areas where you have long blocks. Very, these are pretty long compared to the kinds of block system that you have up in the north. But I, but my conclusion was that we could probably apply the same zoning district to the, to these two areas. That is, north of Lenida, south of Lenida and west of the golf course. But there's a third area that's quite different and that's the area on the hills and east and overlooking the golf course. These, the development, the era of development, the way the buildings are oriented to the street, the width of the streets, the amount of vegetation are all somewhat unique. So the context zones have informed our consolidation of zones. And what we are proposing is that the smaller form actually applies to what we're calling middle housing one, the smaller size, where you'd get two townhouses instead of four, is this area here. And the larger forms are here in your, near your downtown area and in the SRR zone. And the SRR zone stays the same because it has some unique land uses associated with it. That's the proposal so far. So for example, you would, might allow two townhouses attached in the north of Lenida area or in the Nakarni area, but right a couple of blocks behind Lenida Avenue, you might allow four.
We already allowed two in those, the first areas you're talking about, north of Lenida, correct? That's not new?
You already allowed duplexes, but you don't allow townhouses each on their own lots.
Excuse me. Thank you.
Yeah, but, but you're correct, Mayor, that you're already a step ahead of most cities in that you allow two units on every lot.
And I'm assuming the, the, the photos there, that's the Highlands that we're looking at, correct? For those who are more oriented to that kind of thinking than looking at a map. And some of the reason it appears the way it is is because it's new. So it's not necessarily a matter of the landscape. It's the fact that it's almost all entirely new housing within the last few years. So any, anything about vegetation or how the thing appears five, 10, 20 years from now, we just, we can't see that yet because it's too new.
That's, that's partly true, although this area does have wider streets than you have in the north of Lenida or even in the Nakarni area. And it also has beaker lots. So houses are like, they're bigger, wider. When you look at them from the street, they're just wider. These are seven thousand square foot lots typically. So the overall kind of texture and pattern, even when, say, someday you have lots of trees in this area, it might still feel different. Any questions about this?
Just one question. As far as measurement of street width is concerned, are you measuring the actual paved roadway? Or are you taking into consideration the shoulders that are city property that appear to actually be part of yards?
Yes, taking quite a lot of consideration of the area that's, that looks like it's a yard, but it's actually the right-of-way. And we were going to talk about that more when we talk about parking. But that's a characteristic, that verge, the, the area between, I mean, some of your streets are paved, but not all of them are, which the unpaved ones, it's even harder to tell where the cities, it's harder to tell. It's even, I guess, more misleading about what's the right-of-way and what is the yard because you tend to think if it's paved, that's the right-of-way. But it's actually, sometimes there's another twelve to 20 feet beyond the paved area that's still within the right-of-way. But what I was going to say about that is that that is true, even in the Highland area. That's, that's pretty much a universal fact, that characteristic. So I'll go over this one, this slide very quickly, but a lot of the diagrams that are going to, that are in your zoning code or will be in there when we're done with this work are going to be more illustrative like this. So instead of just saying in words what the setbacks are, we're actually trying to show them in a diagram, in a diagrammatic way. This is example of what the cottage cluster recipe looks like. So we talked about building envelope studies. I won't go into that anymore unless people want to return to this or have more questions about this. So let me talk about 95.5, which is another, which is the other ordinance that we're changing. So as I mentioned, in order to do smaller lots and say have cottages on their own lots or a townhouse that's detached, we, we needed to address the land, the subdivision code. And so here's some features of our, of our amendments. We won't be entirely replacing the old subdivision with the new land division ordinance. And we're trying to allow for lots and tract arrangements that we discussed in earlier meetings, like where you might have two dwelling units on two separate lots and you have one, you have a driveway that is adjoined. It's, they share a driveway so that they have less paving. That's not something that would be allowed today, but we want to allow that kind of creative solution to minimizing pavement. Today, you would have to go through a really RGS process called the planned unit development to allow that sort of thing. And classic cottages, which I think people like generally, had to go through a lot of that process to allow things that were innovative at the, that are innovative, like a shared common green and smaller yards and things like that. We want to make those kinds of things easier for new housing. It's also going to process the land divisions. And one of the goals of 95.5 rewrite is to allow a land division to be processed at the same time that a site plan and building permit are issued. So it's faster.
Was there a reason to have those separate in the past?
To have land division and development code separate?
Yeah.
It's a legacy. It's, most cities just adopted them separately and many cities are joining them up together now. Joining them up together is something I would recommend that you do. Walt Wendelasky, who helped me with this piece of work, recommends that too. But it, to do so would be beyond the scope of this project. It's one of those things we, we'd say is an action you should undertake in the future. And that would allow you, Mayor, you didn't say this, but I think for the process to be more transparent and efficient because they're not two separate ordinances. Brad?
Can you scroll up to the left side? Just at the bottom right there, examples, specific standards. So new minimum lot size is 1250, whereas today it's 5,050 by 100. How can we have a 1,250 lot when you've got in parentheses there, 2,500 is required for a dwelling unit?
That's your current standard. Right now, you require, we, we would eliminate that current standard.
So 2,500 per dwelling unit is current and that would be eliminated.
Right.
Got you. Thank you.
And just a little interesting fact, which some of you may not be aware of, even though you're much more familiar with your town than I am. But I discovered this in some GIS analysis that we did of your lot size, which is, in your zoning code, you have a 5,000 minimum square foot. You're supposed to have, to build a dwelling, you're supposed to have 5,000 square feet. And to build two dwellings, you're supposed to have 2,500 square feet for each one. However, many of your lots aren't 5,000 square feet. And in a more urban setting, that might actually be a problem that would, that might be called a non-conforming lot. Many of your lots are closer to 4,000 square feet, actually. So we're in a way cleaning up something that could become a legal issue also by doing some of this work.
I sense that's a whole other kettle of fish in terms of impact. I don't know if now's the time to talk a little bit more about that or if that's another bookmark we put on this for another time.
Well, we are kind of getting close to the end. I'm going to talk about parking last. So if you want
Hope you saved a lot of time for that one, Mercy.
Well, maybe we should talk about parking and then return to this then.
Okay, that's fine. It's with the pleasure of the rest of council too. So if you want to, if you all want to spend time differently or, you know, just say.
All right. So in parking, in the area of parking, the have-to-do thing here is you have to reduce parking requirements to one per dwelling. And that is different from what you have today. You require two parking spaces per dwelling. You also today do not allow that parking, the two dwellings, the two parking spaces per dwelling have to be on-site. They can't be down the street. They can't be shared. Like some of you, will you remember how classic cottages has a shared parking area? And that would not be permitted. That will probably require the planned unit development procedure to exist. So we are reducing the parking requirement. That doesn't mean that someone cannot provide more than one space. It's not a maximum. It's just, we're only requiring one. Yet that makes it easier for a lot of smaller dwellings to exist. It was the planning commission's preference that we eliminate parking requirements for accessory dwelling units entirely and that we eliminate parking requirements from any dwelling unit that might be smaller than, that might be 500 square feet or smaller. And that's part of the proposal that we're moving forward with. But I wanted to talk about some of the opportunities that you have for parking on street. And this gets back to the thing we were talking about, Tom, about the landscaped area, the verge that you see. That's this, up to the Salau line here. This is probably all right-of-way. And this is fairly typical. This is in the Nakarni area. I believe this is in the north of Lenida area and this is in the Highlands area. So you can see there's actually a place for parking potentially here. I think it could be more attractive. It could be more landscaped. You could have some parking pockets where instead of a gravel verge that's uncared for, that's part of the right-of-way, there's actually some landscaping. Here's an example of the way that that is actually handled in classic cottages. So there's something that we haven't resolved completely, but it's a concept where we would use this space. Right now, we're writing the allowance for it to be used. But I think there's some design opportunities. But I think there's some design opportunities to make this a little bit more green as well as a place for parking. And I'm interested in what, any, I'm sure you all have lots of thoughts about the parking generally, but I'm interested in what you think about that idea as well. Tom?
This is really more a question for Leila than it is for you, Marcy. But in our discussions about revenue diversification, we've talked about doing a parking study. And in some of the coffee with councilors, there's been plenty of discussion of issuing parking stickers to residents so that if we do go to a pay for parking scheme, that, that we won't have people simply avoiding the paid parking and going up into the neighborhoods to do the parking. Is this kind of thing going to hasten our decision on enacting something along those lines, Leila?
You mean making the recommendations that Marcy's put forward? Is that your question?
Yeah, if we, if we, if we're going to make it so that by design, there's less parking associated with the particular dwelling and mandating more. I anticipate a larger impact on on-street parking. And so, so that we don't have, you know, Memorial Day, you know, whatever, three-day holiday, all those people parking in the neighborhoods. Because all of a sudden, now we've got a lot more obvious parking on the streets. Are we going to have to start doing it? The residents that actually live there are going to get designations so that they're okay to be wherever they are?
Yeah, I think, I think, I see what you're saying. So there will be greater demand, obviously, in the on-street parking system once housing units start to get built, right? And that will happen over time. The demand I think you're talking about will come into play if and when the city implements any paid parking in the commercial district. It would be a management issue in my mind to then look at particularly the adjacent residential areas that are within walking distance to properly manage those. And that could be done through the issuance of permits and signage and so forth. So it would have to be kind of an integrated approach once we, once and if we implement a paid parking program. But up until that time, I don't think, given the amount of capacity that we really have on-street, that it will present any, any issues. Because we currently, we don't even have time stays on Lenida. So there's really no incentive for people to go park into the neighborhoods. Once you change that, then you got to think about how you manage the on-street system. You know, I would say within five to six blocks of Lenida in particular. But we'd do a study and really thoughtfully think about how we would implement a program like that when the time comes, if the time comes. Does that answer your question, Tom? I can't see because of how my glasses on. Okay, great.
I'd like, I got a couple of things. I don't want to jump ahead though. Do we have other councilors who want to speak on this?
I speak on the parking?
No, I was interested in more information on the landscaping, once we get back to that.
That's included in this, I think, Linda Kirk. Yeah, so go ahead if you have a question on that.
Well, first of all, I really like it. I mean, the, the visual of landscaping is, or greenery is, is really nice. I think that, that, that's, that would, in my mind, be something that would be consistent with the culture of Manzanita. What that means though, is that the city would have to manage that. Is that right? So the city would be responsible for making sure that landscaping was appropriate and well-placed.
Yeah, these are issues that we haven't worked out. They go a little up and beyond the scope of this project. But I think they're worth, they're worth action after this project. Because it isn't, it has been done in places where this landscaping, while it's in the right of way, it is, it is maintained by the property owner.
Okay.
That is one possibility. This parking space is made available for, you know, for on-street parking. But then, an issue also that you would have to contend with in this instance, if you allow this type of treatment or, and/or you required it for an on-street parking space, it's not, it's still on public property and it's available for someone to park who may not live in that house. And that's something that the planning commissioners have kind of been wrestling with. So I don't think we're going to be able to resolve this issue, this concept enough to make an amendment out of it. That's part of this package. But I do think it's something that you should pursue because you have a lot of space. As Leila mentioned, there's, you know, and, and this would, it is, I think, more part of your ethic and aesthetic to have this space used for parking than to pave additional space on your lots for parking and landscape it at the same time. It seems to me that's kind of a win-win for Manzanita to figure out how to do that.
Oh, I would certainly support that. Thanks, Marcy. That, that helps.
I still have a hard time with this one. I, I have consciously opened my mind. I have consciously listened to Leila. I've consciously watched a podcast about this and I've seen all the stats, so I know all of that. And I know we have some planning commissioners that are passionate on this topic. And I'm still, I just, I have a hard time with it. If you go back to the picture where you showed the greenery. Yeah, I mean, so as far as I know, other than on Lenida, we don't have any sidewalks in town, correct?
Correct.
Any images with a sidewalk or a little sidewalk, like down there at the bottom in the middle? That doesn't exist here. What we have on the streets, you know, in the north part of town, doesn't, that doesn't play. And I'm having a hard time visualizing how it would play. So this is the, this is the thing about, like, trying to understand over time with, with the impact of change over time. So, you know, parts of town are very established, you know, and it's hard to picture, it's hard to picture lots being consolidated, you know, because there's homes there now. But we know over time that'll, that could change. That has changed in a couple of spots. I just, I have, I just, you know, let me just put it out there. And then, you know, I may be, I may be very much in a minority on this one. But I know what it, I know what the parking is like in our area when things are busy. And I know there's a big difference between how the streets look and feel and how you get around and how safe you feel and how much room there is when there's a lot of street parking going on. I mean, we typically get it during the big seasons, but we, we've all seen that start to increase over time. And I understand we have the, I understand we have the obligation now to, to go to one. That's the requirement. And that one has to be, am I correct in this? That has to be, by law, that has to be on-site in the lot, right? So I-
Sorry, correct. That, that's a choice. And I would recommend that you not require it to be on the lot.
For any kind of, so basically then we remove, we would be removing any requirement for parking within the lot going forward.
On the lot, right. We would, what, my proposal is that you allow, you require one parking space per dwelling, but you allow that to be on the street if that is desired.
Okay.
It's an option.
So we're going to get a lot of feedback on that and I welcome it. I, I don't know. You know, I've, this is where I don't, I'm, I don't understand how it will play out here in comparison to other situations that I have seen. So for example, I've, I've been in neighborhoods and know people who live in neighborhoods in Portland, you know, densely urban area, where residential streets that used to have parking on it, but they were never full after they, and I know the scale is different. So this is why I'm trying to keep my mind open, at least a sieve, you know? So get some more information in. But I, I know what it looks like and what it feels like when larger apartment units are put in and things like that. There's no parking required. Everybody's on the street and it completely changes. It's completely changed the neighborhoods in, in some cases. And they're really different. And part of what, part of what I'm trying to understand for myself, as well as listening to people, is how much of a, how much of a change this really will be for people over time. And I'm, I'm just, I'm not there yet. And I may be very much in a minority. Everybody had to work with me while I worked through the STR stuff. That took a long time. But this is one where I just, I, I think the character of the city and the town and how it looks and feels, the, the way people walk, the way people ride their bikes, it, it's all dependent on open space in our already, in my mind, not wide streets, at least the part of town that I'm in, which is in that north, north side of things. So I, I'm struggling with this one. I'm, you know, I'm, I'm very open if the community comes in and, and council comes in and says, no, Catherine, you're just a Luddite on this. It's time to move on. And I can see some laughter, that's okay. But I'm, I'm not, I, I need to get my head to a different place to approve that. There, I've just said it. I thought it better to get it on the table. And I know I'm out of touch with the times, but that doesn't change my thinking right now. So there we go.
I would just offer to let you know that we're thinking about parking in a lot of different ways. So it's not kind of, I don't think it's as binary as you have it on the lot or you have it on the street. We're also, part of this study was looking at where is the driveway currently required to be? And we'd like to be able to allow driveways to be closer to the side property line so that you don't lose all that side yard. You're still able to have a driveway and parking on the, on the side, but you're not penalized for it. So that's one thing. And another is allowing, say, as I mentioned earlier, two lots to share a driveway. That, those are all things that are currently permitted, but they might be more creative approaches that allow you to more easily get parking on your site, if that's what you prefer to do. And I do think a lot of people want to have their parking on-site. So, Jerry?
So Marcy, just to understand your, your preference for the one required site to be, parking site, that is, to be off housing site. Is it, is it because you, you can project that if we have it on the lot, it will discourage certain middle housing development?
Yes. And to be, I'll be really clear about my recommendation. It's, we want to make it, the intention here is to allow options for that on-street, for that parking space that you have to have to be on the street or on a driveway shared with an adjacent lot that's a smaller driveway or a driveway that doesn't take up your whole side yard, but is, could be closer to the side setback. And I'm interested in reducing the amount of paving on a lot so that we could get more middle housing on the lot. I mean, that is the trade-off, that you either have a car or you have space for someone to live. And if we can get more space in the street that's already paved and I'll have to create more paved area on a lot and that we could get additional dwelling perhaps, instead of a parking space.
So with the, with the, with the state requirement, not going to stay on to one spot, one parking spot. Would it be a violation of the state requirement if somebody came in and bought a single-family, you know, bought a lot to build a single-family house on it? Would we couldn't require that single-family house to have two spots on their lot?
No, you can still build as many parking spaces as you. But we haven't, we haven't discussed a maximum, so.
No, no, I'm, no, no, I'm saying, so right now, if I, if I buy a lot in Manzanita to build a single-family house on it, I have to have two parking spots on my lot, right?
Today, yes.
If the goal of the state in reducing parking is to spur middle housing, but I still, myself, want to buy a lot and build a single-family house on it, can I be required to have two spots for that single-family house? I guess, I guess I'm, I'm, I'm with you on wanting to encourage the middle housing. And if that means pushing more parking to the street, that, that's something I think we have to wrestle with. But I don't think we want to throw out the old model that has worked well, where it's going to continue to serve single-family houses. It's not, I mean, this change, we're not going to suddenly say, like, I have two, I have two parking spaces at my house right now. I'm not going to discontinue using them when we change the zoning code.
No, so someone could come in and build a house. They could build a triplex. They could park, they could build six places and bill and park those on the lot if they can figure out how to do it. There's nothing prohibiting someone from providing two parking spaces per dwelling for a single dwelling or a triplex.
But there is something prohibiting us to. Okay, well, I mean, I, I think we, I mean, I certainly understand Catherine's hesitation. But to some extent, we're, our hands are tied here. And to another extent, we all are, I think, the consensus is that we do want to encourage middle housing to the greatest extent possible. So, you know, we just may have to figure out how to accommodate both competing sets of interests here. But, but I guess I don't, I don't want us to send the message out to the community that we're, everybody can stop parking on their own property. That we're not forcing people into street parking. And as Leila pointed out, we're not going to know for a while, until the housing is actually materializes and develops. We're not going to really know of the, the impact that this is going to have on parking. So it's, it's, you know, I, I think Catherine's right. We have to try our best to envision how we maintain what people like around here and update our code to be consistent with not only state requirements, but I think the, the will of the community to welcome more new kinds of housing. One question I haven't asked and I was wondering about earlier on is these changes are going to be really significant. They're, they're probably significant in every community that is required to implement them. But they're going to be really significant in Manzanita because it's a small town. People are, you know, used to having things their way for a long time. And it's going to change a lot of stuff. And so I, I guess I'm wondering a little bit about having an extensive list of want-to-do's when the have-to-do's are already going to present a lot of changes and challenges for us. And until they're on the books and we have a few years to figure out how they play out, the idea of doubling down and making all that change even more challenging by having a, a list of want-to-do's seems pretty ambitious. I don't know if you've, if we've thought about sort of cutting our teeth on the have-to-do's. And then, once we have a chance to understand what they have done to us and what the market has done to us and how we've all adjusted to all of these changes, then maybe adding some of the want-to-haves. Is there, is there any merit to sort of staging this or do you think?
One way to think about it, Jerry, might be that, that want-to-haves are a customization. They're things that I think people in the community, at the community workshop and members of the planning commission have thought are more in the- have thought are more in the way that they'd like to see things happen in Manzanita. They're more they're more the Manzanita way. So I worry a little bit about throwing those things out and just going with the what the state said, because I think, yeah, all the thought that's gone into some of these additional housing types and additional standards that you don't have to have, they're part of uh what's going to make this more like your community.
I I I hear that, but I thought I also heard you say that um putting the want to do's to the side for a minute, you are uh helping us customize our approach to accepting the state requirements, right? I mean, we're not just, yeah, we're we're taking, we're not just saying we want the model code, let's have it. You're customizing that uh in various ways to fit Manzanita before you add the want, the want to haves. Want to haves is like an extra la- level of customization, I think. And you know, and again, it's ambitious. I'm not against ambitious plan. I'm just I'm just acknowledging that I think uh we're all in for a lot of a lot of changes, uh, some of which we will be more easily able to control than others. And uh you know, change doesn't always go over well. So uh, having a lot of change uh all at once instead of staging the changes just seems a little um, little bold to me, but um, you know, we've done bold things before. So I'm not not against it. I just want to make sure I understand what we're walking into.
I think that too speaks to just the importance of the um public comment stages for the planning commission's proposal for that meeting as well as anything else we can get between now and, you know, when we're looking at this, which I know we'll go through those dates again, Leila, at the end, just what those next checkpoints will be. Um, yeah, I mean, Jerry, you raise a good point. It's the, it's the question of, you know, do it all at once, just it's going to be changes. Change is always challenging. Change is hard to, it's hard to forecast what the impact's going to be. So do you take? Do you take bigger steps sooner? Do you do a you know, a ration of it now and then plan for some later? And and I don't know that we can come to a conclusion about that in this meeting today, but I think that's something, um, I think that's something we have to have in our mind and the planning commission hopefully has in their mind too, as they, as they come to what their recommendation is going to be. I have a a question, um, I have a question related to an earlier statement and I I know I, I know it keeps getting said, but I'm going to ask and this may be uh too much to ask for, but I will ask for it. So no, when we, and again, you won't be surprised that I'm going back to parking. So if we go to parking and we say by making these changes and then these changes and these changes, what we're doing is we're creating the possibility for more middle housing for the city. One of the questions I've had all along with this from the very beginning has been just really given how built out we are in many parts of our town, you know, how much change is reasonable to expect? What kind of a forecast would that be? So is there any? Is there any way to attach any kind of reality to the statement? I I'm not, I'm not saying the statement's wrong because I think this this policy comes from a lot of work and a lot of study. And I'm not, I'm not saying you have to prove it to me. But what I am saying is could we get a handle on what it actually will mean in practical terms for the city? Could we get to the point where we'd say, you know, planning commission and council and community? If we all band together and we agree on this change for parking or any of the other changes, the possibility then for middle housing for our real life community, not a theoretical one, but our real life community where housing is expensive would be thus. We could up it by five percent. We could up it by 10. It would only be 50 houses, 50 additional dwellings, but those 50 could be very significant. Is there any way we can get to that kind of a, a look at it to really know that we we would have or could have an impact that we'd understand? Rather than just saying, we know it's going to be good for it and now we wait to see what happens?
I'm I'm going to stop sharing my screen so that we can have more of a conversation here. Um, well, I'll offer some of my experience, having helped a number of communities do this since 2019, when the House Bill was adopted, and these are cities of all sizes. And actually combing through some of the data of how much housing has been produced in some of the communities that uh some of the middle, the middle housing, you know, there's I know it's may seem inapplicable to a place like Manzanita, but Portland has seen a huge surge in the housing that's been built, of the housing that's been built, the majority of it is middle housing now. I mean, that, and smaller cities or more rural places have seen a modest amount of um of the new housing that they now see, much of it is middle housing. So we're seeing that in all the cities in Clack, in Clotsop County, for example. You'd see, looking at the, I was just looking at the numbers today, the amount of middle housing duplexes and to some extent accessory dwelling units is increasing year on year on year, five years in. So if that helps, uh, and and still it it's a very gradual change for most places. It seems like it's going to change overnight, but it actually happens very slowly. I, that's what I see.
And the other factor that people not in, I'm not speaking for myself on this, this is just a common thing. Well, in another city where the property values aren't as high as they are, where the cost of building isn't as high as it is because it's the coast, because it's Manzanita. And we know what the, we know what the existing property values are here compared to the other communities. And I think Cannon Beach is a little bit higher than us, but other than that, for our comparable communities, it's it's relatively and and maybe not just relatively, but completely expensive, more expensive than if we were in unincorporated um land in any of our community, you know, urban growth boundary land in any of the communities around us. It's a, it's a pretty significant difference. So yeah, it just would be, you know, maybe we won't get it, but it would just be helpful to understand in a more fact based way, what we project to happen, you know? And you know, just decisions like this, you don't always get that data. I realize that, but we haven't had a lot of it, you know?
I'm just wondering if I I can suggest, I see where you're going with that because I like numbers and to see models of things before now, what can be to maybe ask for that type of data for not the whole city? I think that would be overwhelming for anybody to do a lot of work, but just to pick one small block that we've got 16 houses on this street. If we put all of this in place, what could that one block look like? Goes from 16 houses to duplexes on all of, duplexes on all of them. If we could do some modeling like that, would that help you?
Can I offer just a couple of thoughts on that?
They would be much appreciated.
Okay, good. I want to, so I want to echo kind of what Marcy said about the likelihood of new development being middle housing is I think a fair assumption to make and that it will be gradual. I think, so there's, I think the majority of like change, big change, and again, I think will be gradual, will be in the areas that are undeveloped. Right? So the urban growth boundary is likely to see more physical impacts. And that just depends on how that gets built out. The areas that are already currently developed, I think you're more likely to see things like accessory dwelling units over time, potential conversions of existing single, single unit dwellings into duplexes. There's all kinds of building code issues that have to be addressed when you do a conversion. And then sort of the the limited number of vacant lots within the city, like those are the places that within the existing developed area that will change. I think any, and I I appreciate the the desire for a model, but I think anything that we would develop is not going to be fact based. It's going to be assumption and conjecture and could be misleading, right? So I I don't, I I understand why you're asking for that, but I would caution you to rely on that because we just don't know. And we don't know what the market is going to do in terms of development generally. So it's going to be very hard for us to to do that kind of analysis. I mean, we have a a buildable lands inventory that's now five years old. That gives us a sense of the total capacity for development, but like over the next 30 to 40 years, and that capacity will increase. One of the, I did want to note, one of the next things that we will do is um housing needs analysis, right? We have to do an HNA after this work is done. And that will look at what we need to build um in order to meet housing demand and will allow us to update those models that look at housing development. But I would just caution against um looking at that and thinking it's fact when it's really not. It's just us saying, okay, well, if this built out to the maximum capacity, it could be this. It could take 40 years or 10 or five. We just simply don't, don't know that. So I think I know it's not comfortable, but I think the overall theme here is that the greatest change will occur probably in the urban growth boundary visible. And that's where the most capacity is for residential housing in our city. The change in the already developed areas will change modestly over time and the likelihood of housing, right now, it's either um additions or single unit dwellings because of some of the conditions that Marcy's outlined, right? Our our code is actually not friendly to duplexes. You'll see more middle housing coming in, but I I would say, based on what I've even seen in other cities where we've implemented this, the change is very, is pretty gradual. And we are fairly built out as a community within the city limits. But that, you know, that won't feel that way to the neighbor whose vacant lot turns into a fourplex for sure. But I think those are the places where you would see the biggest change is on vacant lots and in the urban growth boundary over time for what it's worth.
Yep. That's helpful. Do you want to talk about the uh dates for adoption then? And I can pull up the slide that has that information on it.
Can I ask another question about some of the code that we didn't talk about that I saw on the council packet?
Yes.
Um, page 169, and I think it's mentioned elsewhere, we talked about maximum building height. Currently, it's 28.5. Uh, and please correct me if I'm wrong with any of these points. And I understand uh, the height bonus of 20% applies to affordable housing. So we come up with 34.2, but it looks like we sort of rounded up the maximum building height would be 35. Is the suggestion that that be applied to all zones and all housing types?
No, I'm glad you brought that up, that uh, there was quite a bit of discussion about that bonus for affordable housing. As uh, we, we don't need to raise the uh by right height because that bonus will be available for affordable housing. Um, and it will come up above the 28.5, but we will, but the, I think the consensus of the planning commission was to keep the 28.5 as the maximum. So only affordable housing, that's defined by the state, um, rules would be eligible for that bonus.
So in general, if we pass the recommendations, we're still sticking with 28 and a half. And if somebody wanted to do something different than that, that was not classified as affordable housing, they'd have to go for a a variance to get that approved.
Yes, whatever the process is for um greater height.
And just one little, I think it's a housekeeping thing, but um, when I was looking through the packet on page two, where we talked about indexes and references to things, it mentioned attachment B for the maps of the new zones. And I did not find an attachment B. I think it's labeled as attachment A.
Yeah, and I will update the packet materials that came up in planning commission too. So it's the maps are attachment B, but they are labeled as attachment A and Marcy.
Thank you. I just wanted to make sure it wasn't me.
No, no, and I, that came up and I, I updated it to the planning commission, but not to all of you. So I'll get that updated.
And um, if it helps, I bookmarked the attachments in the one version that Leila's going to send out. So you could go to the PDF and you just like, instead of having to scroll through.
Click the link, yeah.
Thank you, Brad. Are there other questions for Marcy before Leila takes us through the schedule for adoption? Okay, I can't see, Tom's still on here, right? In the version?
He actually let me know that he had to drop off.
Okay, got it. Okay. Thank you. Okay, so uh, the schedule, Leila?
Sure. So the, so today we're at our work sessions. Your first one, we're anticipating the planning commission will be holding a special work session on June 2nd. And that we anticipate to be their, their fourth specific work session on the amendments. They've had a bunch of other work sessions before. And that we expect to be their fourth and final. And then we have noticed a public hearing for June 9th that will be held by the planning commission. So the process is the planning commission holds a public hearing and then will hear public comment. Uh, there's potential they could raise amendments at that meeting. But ideally, amendments or no, they will make a recommendation to the city council to adopt uh, the ordinances. And we anticipate having another work session with all of you in June at 2:00. So that will be after the public hearing. So we'll have the benefit of the public comment. We'll kind of know the outcome of the June 9th hearing. And then they put in sort of two dates or three dates here as tentative. So I want to be clear that we will take the time we need, you need to make this decision. But July 1, the state's model code goes into effect. And so whether we adopt this or not, those new rules go into effect in July 1. So staff will start evaluating um anything related to housing using those rules and not 95 dash 5 until our ordinance is amended and updated and is in compliance with state law. So we anticipate, if you're ready, having that first public hearing at city council. So that would be the first reading of the ordinance. You're also required to have a public hearing on July 9th. And then um you would have a second public, you would have a second reading. There's no public hearing required at the August 6th meeting. That's one track. The second track would be you have a third work session in July. And then you have a first reading and public hearing in August. And again, that can shift and change depending on where all of you are at. Um, so I just wanted to put those kind of two alternative tracks here that seem the most likely. But again, we'll take the time that we need, but we will be relying on the state's model code um until the such time that this ordinance is adopted. And it will be done as an emergency. So when the second reading occurs, it will go into effect um immediately.
And that would be at the August 6th, the way it's laid out here?
Yes, yeah. The alternative would be, that would be September, I don't know the, whatever our September meeting is.
Okay. Could you, without a lot of detail, are we at much risk of anything in particular for being on the state's code for a couple of months while we finish this up in a good way?
Yeah, I mean, I think risk makes it seem scary, but yeah, we'll definitely get we'll definitely get plans to review, housing plans to review uh in that timeframe. I checked with Scott this morning and he gets between, it depends. And sometimes their um additions will be subject to this too. So. subject to this too. So yeah, I mean, we will certainly get applications during that timeframe.
Is there anything in the criteria between what the state, we'd have with the state and what we're looking at here? That's a significant enough difference that you'd want to call it out to say one big area or one medium sized area would be X?
You know, Marcy, I don't know if you could jump in on that. I, I don't, I don't know.
I don't think there's anything that, the only thing that I think you, you know, you might be, it's a design issue that you might be at risk of seeing in a development. And that would be if somebody comes forward with a a, a row house, a townhouse. And they're, and they're meeting this, the model code. There's some provisions in there that I don't fully love because they allow the garage to face the street and there not to be enough space between driveways. I think that's sort of uncharacteristic of Manzanita. And also not very good orientation, but anyway, it's, it's allowed by the model code. But I, I mean, only if you saw that one type of house and that one kind of subdivision. But it seems like that's a second tier issue. You're not likely to see that. You're more likely, I think, to see a, a middle housing type in the, maybe in the urban renewal area.
Urban growth boundary.
Urban growth boundary area.
I was like, do we have an urban renewal? That either. Back in 1904, maybe. Okay, thank you.
And it only applies again to the must do's, the have to's, you know, it doesn't, it doesn't, their code doesn't address any of the additional things that we were exploring.
No, thank you. And it's not a reason to do anything different with the timing. I just, I hadn't asked it that specifically before. So thanks for letting us know. Any comments or questions from council, either about the schedule or anything you want to say as we wrap up? Does anybody want to talk about parking? That's a no. Okay. That's a clear no.
We'll wait till next time. So we'll wait till next time to talk about parking.
You know, we're all here to say what we think and how we got there and to be transparent. So that's the spirit, that's the spirit of it. It's interesting at times for all of us. Okay. I want to thank Marcy and Scott, they're in the background at the ready if need be, and Leila. People, there's been a lot, I mean, a lot of work. And now we're, we're getting ready to do one of those handoffs. That's always challenging when you've had a group of people working very, very hard on something heads down, in some cases, subject matter experts. And then you're handing it off to a city council and we're looking at it in some ways for the first time and trying to understand the impact. So and trying to understand and hopefully get a broad community input to this. Because we all know not very many people set their calendars to watch the planning commission. And not many, well, we have a few stalwarts and we have our stalwarts for council meeting, but we hope to have a lot more people aware of this. And I guess, you know, one thing we didn't mention, Leila, was the notice. Maybe you want to talk about that for a minute because that's very important.
It is important. Thank you. So we're staff, I want to thank staff for helping me, helping me. They did the majority of the work, but I did a lot of envelope stuffing last night. We have sent notice to every single property. We couldn't sift out the commercials. So every single property in the city and urban growth boundary will receive a letter from the city. It's, they call it measure 56 notice. So we did this just as a precaution. So any changes to our land use regulations that could, we're not saying they are, but they could affect your property rights and value, we have to notice folks. So every single person or every single owner will receive that letter, which also lists the public hearing on June 9th. And so that's going to go out this week. It has to be noticed at least 20 days in advance of that hearing. So those will go out, I think, tomorrow. And then I expect to get a lot of questions about that because the state requires us to put a certain kind of language in there. And I expect people to be like, wait, what? Something's happening to my property? So I'm putting together a Manzanita Minute that sort of talks broadly about, hey, this is what's happening. This is what's going on, providing resources to folks. So we'll post that on the website and then I expect to send that out with the water bill. So folks will get that in addition to this notice. So they'll kind of get double noticed in the old fashioned way. And so I don't know any better way to get the information out there. So I expect you will get those that are interested to participate in that public hearing or send in comments. And so yeah.
Will the, will the, will the planning commission meeting be referenced in there as well or just the council meeting?
It's, no. So it's actually the planning commission is the first hearing. So it's the June 9th is, and we had to notice the Department of Land Conservation and Development as well. We had to give them 35 days notice. So it references the June 9 meeting and says this will be the first of at least two public hearings. And so your public hearing will be the second public hearing.
Thank you. I misremembered the date. So thanks. Yeah, that's what you, that's what you said. Okay. So Brad, I hope you're ready for letters coming in.
Not a standard answer.
I'm ready. As long as my, as long as my support star Leila is ready.
Why is ready?
Yeah. Well, truly, thank you. Marcy, you've been a very good partner in this. I haven't watched all of those commission meetings, but I've certainly watched a part of it. And I think the way that you through your experience and your expertise, the way that you're able to help people work through, it's been very useful. And I'm sure I'm going to need more of that as we go forward. So thank you in advance for that as well.
I'm happy to provide. Thank you for being such good partners in this process.
Okay. Well, if I hear nothing else, I'm going to call the, this workshop to a close at 3:57 PM. Thank you, everyone. Have a good awful evening.
All right. Bye.
Bye.